All right. Let's get started. Call to order and recording. The members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Tang.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Ingles and Zapp.
Opening meeting's applied segment read.
I, the Andersons' clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify prior that to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, so being Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view of the office of the superintendent.
Just did that, sorry. Consent agenda. All the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
Minutes of the June 28, 23 regular meeting. Approval of the finance report. Approval of the activity fund report. Approval of activity fund fundraisers. Approval of activity fund inter-account transfers. Approval of booster club sanctioning request. And that's it.
Okay, so we'll go back up to agenda item 3.2, our minutes from the June 28, 2023 regular board meeting. Did not see any errors with those. Agenda item 3.3, the first attachment are the June investments. And you can see that those investments are current and up to date. Agenda item, oh, let's go back to 3.3, excuse me. If you look at the second attachment and open that attachment up, just take a look back for just a moment, there are, that is the final revenue for 24 school year, 23 school year. If you look at the first page, you can see our gross production, we were up 241,575.76, which is a market improvement from where we've heard the previous year. You can see in motor vehicle tax, we still were a little bit below REA tax, we were above our school land earnings, we were above collections, and then county four mil, we were also above in that area. If you look at the second page of the attachment, giving you the revenue and expenses comparison for FY 23 to FY 22 graphically, and then on the third page, give that same information to you by number. And so, we've had a revenue increase from FY 23 to FY 22 of over a million dollars, and we've spent about 687,000 more than we did last year. If you look at the third attachment there on the finance report, tried to give you each year kind of what it looks like with our finances and our expenses broken down per fund. And so, you can see the very top chart there, the general fund expenses. You can see we've had an increase in our payroll expenses. Our non-payroll expenses, you can see that those increased with our general fund. Pretty common amongst all districts and really all businesses when you look at inflation. Talked to our food company today, and they experienced just in their field 9% inflation last year. So, see that pretty similar across the board. Our total expenses for the FY 23 school year, 11,465,633. If you go down and look at the next chart there, you have general fund revenue. You see our actual collection, 11,793,927.12. And then you have our estimate of needs. On the actual collection, that doesn't include our carryover. So, you don't include that in what you actually collect for the year. So, we had a good year as far as collection. You can see we over-collected from our estimate of needs. Building fund expenses, we don't take any payroll out of our building fund habits since FY 18. Our non-payroll expenses, you can see that that increased from last year, from FY 22 to FY 23. Part of those expenses is going to be the renovation of the gymnasium and part of the cafeteria projects. You see the jump from FY 21, FY 22, that was the renovation of the art room. If you look at the second page of that attachment, you have building fund revenue, what we actually collected in our building fund, 880,297. Our estimate of needs was 658,996. So, we over-collected in that building fund. Our building fund has been very strong. I think through the stewardship of this board and superintendents prior to myself have really allowed that fund to maximize its potential, allows us to continue to do some projects and some improvements throughout the district. Child nutrition expenses, you can see that with our child nutrition expenses, we've seen a decrease in our payroll since FY 21. Part of that is when we moved to our food service management company. Our non-payroll expenses, those have increased, and part of it is why you're going to see an increase there is our cafeteria renovation project. Our finances in child nutrition really took off as a result of the pandemic in every school district. We were not alone. We received full reimbursement for every meal. And so, lots of school districts went through a, and are going through a process of spending down that money at this point because those were federal funds. If you look at the last box there, we have child nutrition revenue. Our actual collection was 565,514.97, and our estimate of needs was 439,303. So, those are just kind of some financials to break down each fund. If you look at the third and final page, giving you a history of the fund balance since 2011, you can see that our fund balance is very strong in all three areas. You can see it's decreasing in the child nutrition area, which is good. We don't want to carry over a lot of money. We want to be able to buy our equipment and use our funds wisely. And so, that is a good thing that we are beginning to spend that down through some renovation. Any questions? That's a lot of information. Any questions before we move on to agenda item 3.4?
Is there any way they would cut our child nutrition budget because of our carryover? Didn't we have something like that happen one time? That's probably been a long time.
They would, I think they would penalize you. I don't know if they'd cut your budget, but they'd penalize you. We had to submit a plan for how we would spend down, I believe it was 145,000, Terry, does that sound right, roughly, in that neighborhood of how we would spend 145,000 this past year. That was calculated within federal funds that we received. So, I would anticipate that we will again have to spend more down, buying some equipment, doing some renovations as we move into the next year.
I've seen the years that we were on the flip side of that, weren't we? Waiting on that money to come, and we didn't have anything in there, and that was really scary. So, appreciate you guys' prudence in all of these fund balance carryovers.
Okay, agenda item 3.4, the top agenda item, if you open that up, that is going to be for the month of June. All of our activity accounts are in good shape. Mrs. Hall is doing a fantastic job. Bottom attachment is year-to-date. Agenda item 3.5 fundraisers for FY 24. If you'll open up that attachment, kind of want to walk you down through this just a little bit. So, if you, as you scroll down through these pages, there's 12 pages here, and we started doing this to kind of keep a little bit better track of how we were fundraising and what we were fundraising. And so, anything in yellow is something we left on there, even if it wasn't a fundraiser that was completed last year, in the event that one of the sponsors decided they wanted to fundraise. So, you're going to see a lot of fundraisers on here. What I want you to do is as you scroll down through that, you'll see in that FY 23 column, Mrs. Hall has gone through there, and in areas that are not red, put "did not do." And so, there are even some blank ones that you'll see that were not completed and were not done, but we left those on there in the event that those were completed or a sponsor or coach wanted to complete those. We really want to try to be mindful about our fundraising efforts and not fundraising and hitting up our businesses like we've done in the past. One of the things that we did a little bit different this year, which added to the total number of fundraisers, is under every class and under every organization, we put a meal and a concession stand in the event that they, those sponsors, wanted to sign up to run a meal or concession stand. So, that's going to increase the number that you see also. So, I'll let you look down through that. I want to look at the very last page, on page 12. It's really, I guess, where it all comes down to. At one point, I had calculated that we had 99, and we have, after we've made some adjustments and made sure that we have everything on there, so we don't continually bring this back to you, there's 147 fundraisers. And if you look at our, and one of the reasons why we did this also was to kind of look throughout our history of what we worked fundraising and how many actually we completed. And so, if you look through our history, we've actually gone down in the number of fundraisers that we're actually doing and completing. Many times, I think there's a worry among sponsors and coaches, we need to make sure and get this turned in and get this down so it's approved, but they may not end up asking or end up doing that fundraiser. So, you can see we went from, I don't know what year that is, but from 102, down to last year, we had 66. So, getting pretty close to half of where we originally started from. Any questions regarding, yeah, because that's a lot of information also. Any questions regarding those?
I have a, I have one small question. So, since we have a football guru here, it looks like there's no, football has zero fundraisers. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're actually dissolving our football booster club, which was not an activity account, because essentially when we looked at our expenses, we'd gotten to the point through the marketing plan and what the general fund has covered, we want to be able to handle the needs of every sport. When I arrived here two years ago, the first thing that hit me was when my daughter came home and said, hey, we got a fundraiser to pay cross-country needs. I was like, what? So, I immediately came up with the flag idea. So, our role is to be able to run a self-sufficient athletic department through ticket sales, through the marketing plan, through the flag sales, try to stop all the sport individual fundraisers going to businesses, because that's what I hear when I go to business. Coach, can we, can we change how we do this? And then trying to get the coaches to understand that we're going to take care of all your needs, you know, what are your wants? And if we have wants, then we examine how are we going to do this fundraiser so it's not hitting the same people, meaning the businesses.
A good example of that is last year, our athletic account paid for hotel rooms at state tournament for our girls. They didn't have to fundraise for that. Another really good example is this year. In the past, our tier parking has all gone to football or to a booster club, and that's actually going to be an all-athletic fundraiser. So, all of our student athletes will be able to use that money for their program. And so, just an attempt, like Coach Foster said, to try to cut down on going to businesses. And that's a real tough, you know, it's something we still have to visit with all of these sponsors and coaches, teachers, because everybody wants to be able, we want everyone to be able to have their needs met for programs, and so that's why you're going to see so many. But I think what you'll see in the future, you'll see that number go down as we all start working together better.
All right, and I think that's why you pitched them, because I do think it does get hard now. I just see, I only virtually see one sport that's buying into it.
Well, I, I.
And I, that's what I don't see.
What you're seeing there in front of you is not necessarily reflected on what will be done this year.
Okay.
So, when we look at concessions and meals and that, we just listed every sport with that, but some of those things, coaches just put it down. So, like softball, for example, Fast Pitch said, hey, we're getting ready to do our leather thong. Well, I have individual parents come to me and say, Coach, can we not have to fundraise? Because I hit my same 15 names in the fall, the winter, and the spring. I told Megan, just hold off. We'll do that out of that athletics account, the marketing plan. If the kids are going to keep it or they're going to eat it, we're asking the coaches for the families to handle that, and we have a backup plan for any family that can't. For example, I'll send a credit card with, let's say a team plays a cushion, and they'll take a credit card, then we'll be tied to the athletic account, I'll do a PO on it. So, if any kid, we'll leave no kids behind. But when we stop after a track meet, our kids picked up their own meals. Well, football, when I looked at our expenses last year, we were feeding the kids after each game. Why do we feel like we have to feed the kids? As a parent, I feel responsible to take care of my kid, but we as a staff want to leave nobody behind. So, when I had a kid that stayed on the bus, to me, that meant he didn't have money. It was one kid. So, when I went to McDonald's, I just picked it up. But now our coaches would have the credit card, I would do a PO ahead of time that would cover expenses of any meals, so no kids left. You know, without a meal, that's embarrassing for a kid. I just picked it up and, you know, took care of the meal. But we don't want to leave anybody out. But let's say, for example, Fast Pitch Softball, they wanted a team shirt they wear on game day. They don't wear the jersey. So, they're doing a personalized shirt that the girls feel good about, I think has their number on it, is personalized. Well, those families are paying for that. Well, there was four that didn't order it on the online store, so we just paid for that out of athletics. If they have money in those activity accounts, what we want to do is cut down on that, the money coming out of individual activity accounts, because they have to fundraise to get that money in there. If we take care of it out of athletics, which is 803 account, then in time, quickly, they're going to see, I don't have a lot of need to do that. Softball, for example, they had to budget for officials. Well, now it's coming out of athletics. Well, all the gate money's going back into athletics. So, we have a big football gate, tier parking, it's all going back into athletics. You know, me as a football coach, I like to think I didn't slip my own wrist, because that money at some time was steered towards football. Now, it's going to be steered towards all the kids, all the gate money, whether you have a reserve spot up there or you pay a ticket price, that's all going to impact all those things, so that we don't have to go out and fundraise things that potentially we used to. Does that make sense?
So, it's safe to say that we'll eventually see everybody look like football? And I just, I'm not, I feel like I'm picking on you, but I'm not.
No.
I'm just going to take it back.
Sure.
I just, I just think there has to be, you know, because I noticed, I mean, like, I know some of them take, like baseball, they're taking out of town to river.
So, much.
That's a big expense too.
Yeah, like a spring break trip.
Yes.
Because last year, they stopped doing that. But one thing I want to be able to do is any team that plays in a regular tournament, like a boys' basketball, a girls' basketball, Fast Pitch and baseball is one regular season tournament your lodging is taken care of through athletics. Any team that goes to state, they don't have to get nervous like we did the first year of state track, when I said, man, that's awesome, we got all these kids, and the coaches go, we got to pay for hotel rooms. You know, I said, what do you mean, we got to pay for hotel rooms? Well, now we're going to have a means to budget that and have that money, so if a team makes it to state, they're not worried about having to raise that money real quick. We'll take care of all state tournament lodging and one regular season tournament for those teams that travel.
Yeah, I think you're spot on about taking care of all that. I really appreciate that. And I think it's, and like I said, I think it's commendable that you're taking it on. I just, right now, I see, and I know putting stuff in here is just in case we want to do it. And that's not really fair either to our people, because you can't go back and do it later, so it's like, what if?
Well, and we have, and I mean, you talk about, you mentioned buy-in, and that's a really good point. I think, you know, Coach Foster really hasn't had an opportunity. When we had these teachers and coaches and sponsors do this, this was kind of on their checkout day when they were leaving. So, you know, there needs to be an opportunity to have the conversation about how that'll work and what it'll look like. And so, it'll, it'll take some time to do, but I do appreciate the vision, because I think our community will appreciate that in the long run.
And with our new coaches that we hired, there's a lot to cover with new coaches coming in. Like, some of those things were literally just carried over. Like Jeremy Jones, for example, they went, they stayed in town, they didn't do a bunch of camps. They went to Cleveland, so they had some expense there. So, we are going to have to figure out, if I've got money left, I'm not hesitant to do those things in the summer, so they don't have to raise it. But as you take this on this Amassick project in terms of figuring out how are we going to get the money in, that's why we brought in the football tiers, the marketing plan, gate money, and now how are we going to take care of everybody's needs? And if we hit the summertime, so we don't have to raise money, okay, we can take care of one travel team camp for each of the basketball programs. Same thing for baseball in the summer, but I can't predict that, the summertime stuff, that might have to be raised in time. You know, that, that might be an individual fundraiser, but I'm going to try to steer them towards individuals as opposed to businesses.
I know it takes a lot of time on it, but it's something that we don't have time to talk about very often. I know, I don't know whether all of them understand it or not, because I get hit with lots of questions about being where I am, and I can't understand it, and I can't explain it. And so, that's why it's important for us to be able to understand it. Is everybody budgeted through the marketing plan? Does, then do you push that into a budget and say equally by the number of students or whatever you do? Does everybody have a budget? Does everybody come back and present something to be spent from that budget? I know you're rotating uniforms through a whole different plan. It's not through here, is it?
Because, because the district purchases all of those things.
Right, okay. So, I just, I said, I apologize for taking so much time on it, because it, but it's something that, it's, it's a lot, and it's something that I think I want to understand, and it's hard to take time to do that. I go back then to the activity fund report, where I see there's like $38,000 in the activity in the athletic fund. So, that, you know, we used to zero those out, remember when we used to then take whatever money was here and then divide it between all the sports? Now, that was concession money. But I was wondering, that's last year's money, if I, if I understand it right. Is it not last year's money?
Well, it's based on that date. See, we started the marketing plan earlier, so it's a little deceiving, because June 15th, we were under $10,000 in athletics.
And what is it now, 30? I just noticed it, because I maybe want to talk about this. I, and I don't, again, we could probably do it on another.
I think we brought in 33,000 so far.
It's 32,470. So, that is next year's money?
Yeah, we just started a little bit, so it shows on this fiscal year, because we started June 15th, and those people have paid in in that two weeks of June. It showed, now we've got to turn around and pack up, you know, for the athletic department baggage. A lot of those things, it's just not going to work.
No, I, I, that's great. I mean, I, that's awesome to get a jump on it. I was just thinking that looked like that would be carryover from last year.
Yeah.
From what we see here. Because this ends June 30th. So, okay, that makes sense then. I'm just trying to understand it, because I, I desperately, I'm having a hard time putting it all together, where I see some of them are not fundraising, some are fundraising some, some are fundraising a little, some are fundraising gigs still, some of them, the band still has to fundraise hard. Where do we fit this all in to how it translates through everything? And that's, that's what I want to understand, because I don't think one, there ought to be one set of rules for this over here and another set of rules for this over here.
I can promise you when those coaches come back, member of all district meeting, they will all be on the same page. Like, I'll, I'll have preseason meetings this week with our sports, Fast Pitch starts next Monday, so I'll get her on the same page. Her and I have already met.
Well, I'm not picking on her. I love her. I love you.
Yeah.
I love all of them. I'm not picking on anybody.
Are you meaning like, are you meaning like, I guess you ask about band or vocals still need to fundraise?
Well, look at, look what they have asked to be presented.
Right.
Okay, so, do they have a, something that comes in from the overall advertising campaign that maybe pulls back in to help them, or do they still have to fundraise for everything they have? Ag still has to fundraise for everything?
They're still selling golden gold sausage, they're still, they're still selling cookie dough.
Okay, so that's what I want to be able to understand, that when I look at this, it doesn't look like it's very much, doesn't look the same.
Sure.
And so.
The marketing plan, when those folks buy ads or advertisement or the game, that's all for the athletics, because that's when those ads or promotions are going to be done. So, all of that money stays with all of the athletic groups.
Great, yeah, and I get that. So, when band booster comes and Act One or the acting group booster comes, and the cheerleaders comes, cheerleaders part of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're trying to include them on that space.
And they still have quite a bit of fundraising?
They do. Chesley and I, we're going to meet this week on Sunday.
Like I said, before we, I just, I don't know, I don't quite see that it's all meshing like we're being, that we're, I know it's going to take time. I'm not disappointed. I just want to understand, understand it, because I don't understand it yet, until we see how it, all the fundraising goes away, how a budget is designed, how the money comes from a marketing and how it's divided, until we see that, then we'll understand.
Yeah, and so, to give you an example, each coach prior to the season comes up with their list of needs. So, Megan Stratton came to me, I need nets, I need two buckets of balls, I need a bat. She comes to me with that, that's coming straight out. She's, that's what she's determined is her needs. I also turn around and told her, your lodging is taken care of for the per-sale tournament, the per-sale Washington tournament. If you make state, your lodging is taken care of. Kids after the games, they'll take care of their own meals, but I'll send you with a credit card. So, her needs are taken care of. They just got new uniforms, and that came out in general. So, essentially now, those kids are supplying their own cleats, basics that they're going to keep. Things they're going to keep, the schools are going to pay for. If they're going to eat it, they're going to pay for it themselves unless some.
So, everybody buys their own football shoes?
Yep.
So, we just, and we've been, last year was the first year we did that, that I can remember.
What's that?
That everybody bought their own basketball shoes. Which was fine, you know?
Sure.
It hits those ones with a freshman, junior, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. We had a couple of families with that combination.
But we are prepared to help them.
I know you are, and, and boy, people are so gracious to help. So, I, I will move on, but while I had you right here to be able to explain to all of us.
And it's a hot topic, because our constituents will ask, my gosh, I get hit up all the time. I share, I share information with Mr. Argo on my plan to make this a self-sufficient deal. I could share that with you guys as well, because that's going to show you the different sources of income, like the tiers. Tiers are going to bring in $9,000, basically. Well, that money didn't used to come straight to athletics. I didn't, I don't need it. Mr. Argo takes care of our needs with shoulder pads, helmets, the things that we have to have to participate. We would buy meals for our kids, honestly, and get on the bus, and half the kids run home with parents, and we couldn't eat all the hamburgers. He bought them for everybody. So, some of those things, I think we just have to get back to, we don't have to, coaches don't like to fundraise. Like, they don't wake up and sell on fundraisers. I just want our coaches to coach, and I don't want to ask the same people again and again. So, that's the, the design, you know, of improving the marketing plan, so it's, it's as good as it can be. And this year, we'll be on Huddle TV. We're looking at purchasing a new scores table, digital scores table for the basketball gym, so we can, down there on court side, I want to be able to bring the radio down, court side on the opposite side, and it'll be a digital board that will show our kids pictures, and then it'll, it'll show the ads. But those are things at the AD conference that come up, that other people are doing that dress up a facility, and it gives those advertisers true exposure in that facility.
Please, please know that I think things are, I appreciate everything, and I, I think what you're doing is good. I'm not complaining one speck.
Sure.
It's mainly, and Mr. Argo's very good about telling me when I ask questions about what's going on too, and even when I don't ask questions. It's just, like I said, when we looked at this, I want to make sure I understood where we were headed.
Sure.
Because it did, it does not quite reveal where I think we are headed. I think there's a lot of fundraising still in there.
Yeah, and you'll see a lot of those won't happen. They're in yellow right now, they're not going to happen this year, and we reviewed it this year, because that came up in early June when I came to him and said, let's become self-sufficient as an athletic department.
Because those years change. I mean, we've all known the years when the actual sport had to pay for their own fuel. They had to pay for things. It was, those were some really tough times, and we're, still didn't get to do that and pay for meals and stuff, so we're really blessed, and we want to pass that right on to our kids, just like you really, and I appreciate it. All right, sorry for all that, but I wanted to make sure all of you kind of understood what I was, what I've been thinking about.
I appreciate that.
I do too. So, thank you for that.
It's a, it's a monster, it is. All right.
Okay, agenda item 3.6, no inter-account transfers. Agenda item 3.7, if you'll go through each one of those, we have the Alba 4H FFA Booster Club. I'll give you a minute to open up each one of those attachments, but those groups are I'll give you a minute to open up each one of those attachments, but those groups are all applying for sanctioning. Students cannot raise money, that's why they're sanctioned through the Board of Education, and then they provide their financials, and then how they will be spending that money. So with Alba Four-H FFA Booster Club, they have the Four-H, and then the next attachment, next attachment is going to be the FFA. You'll look through one, I think it'll be a trophy auction. So you go down through each one of those, and we have the Black and Gold Booster Club. Three point seven point three is our Band and Electric Gold Booster Club, or excuse me, Vocal Music and Electric Gold Booster Club. And the last one is just the Band Booster Club. And so we appreciate all these booster clubs, they do a lot for our kids. And we appreciate their work, and their work with their coaches. Any questions on sanction requests from those booster clubs?
Ken, just for, your question was, this was confusing for me when I started. These booster clubs like this, we have, we approve them, they're sanctioned by us. The money is all kept outside of the school. So, and we have virtually no oversight on them at all, really. They raise their own money, they spend it how they want it, and the good news is, they have been very successful doing it. They're great people doing great things for our kids. So it, some schools have trouble with these, but there's a lot of money that's run through this right here, that we sanction. We want to know about it, but we absolutely have absolutely no oversight really for it. So it's, it's kind of weird, but it's what it is. So thank you, Mr. Argo.
If there are other questions regarding the consent agenda, I would recommend it's approved.
Most of the approved requests, one with three point seven, and all of the attachments ago, with three point seven as presented.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item number four, vote for approved purchase order encumbrances for the following funds. Four point one, general fund as referenced, four point two, building fund as referenced, four point three, child nutrition fund as referenced, four point four, gift fund as referenced.
Okay, if you'll start with agenda item four point one, and the top attachment, that will be our general fund purchase orders to begin the year. Many of these purchase orders are going to be open purchase orders, so the money's encumbered from year to year. And so we're going to go down through a few of these. Number thirteen is Index Oklahoma, that's our fire alarm monitoring, it's eleven thousand nine hundred twenty. Purchase order number fourteen, forty-seven thousand five hundred, that's our farm plan fuel and supplies from the TOA. Purchase order number twenty-nine for twenty-one thousand two hundred forty, Century Business Technology, that's the lease for our copiers. You see, purchase order number forty-six, eighty-nine thousand, it's Midwest Bus Sales, that's for the lease of our buses. Purchase order number fifty-three, one hundred and ten thousand one hundred and fifty, that's an open purchase order that we use for substitutes to start the year. You're going to see some different ones, fifty-eight to sixty-two, all those purchase orders, and the money involved in those all relate to transportation expenses. Purchase order number sixty-four, six thousand six hundred ninety-six, it's Time Clock Plus, that's our software that we use for support staff to clock in and out, certified employees to take leave. Purchase order number seventy-four and seventy-five, one thousand two hundred and four thousand ninety, that's Max Teaching. Max Teaching is going to come and provide professional development start the year, and aligns with our goal area of curriculum instruction. Purchase order number eighty-nine, eighteen hundred, Historical Emporium, that's a One Act Costumes, for the high school. The purchase order, the very next purchase order, number ninety, for four hundred dollars, is One Act Supplies for their set. Purchase order number ninety-two, that's five thousand twenty-eight seventy-six, those are Spanish books, textbooks, for our Spanish classes at the high school. Purchase order number ninety-three, Cengage Learning, those are some new textbooks for statistics class at the high school. Purchase order number ninety-five, thirty-one thousand twenty-four fifty with Archway, that is a ELA adoption year this year. And so that is a purchase order to cover those books, middle school. Purchase order number ninety-eight and ninety-nine, those are VAX lottery grants, so that's our VAX class at the middle school. We are reimbursed for those, buying some sewing machines for those classrooms. Purchase order number one twenty-nine, one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, one forty. Those are the O E E T grant materials for Ms. Webster's grant that she received, will be reimbursed for that. If you remember, she provided a little presentation on those supplies. Purchase order number one sixty-one, Sam Glenn, that will be for nine thousand, that's District Professional Development Speaker. And then purchase order number one sixty-four, Percussion Source, three thousand six hundred seventy-three sixty-four, those are percussion instruments for high school and middle school band. Any questions regarding the purchase order for the general fund?
Do you want to go with this SRO, one with the contract that we approved, the contract?
Yes.
That's a little bad there.
Uh-huh.
Does it, is that, does that represent two officers?
Fourteen hours, so it's a, so we pay for fourteen hours of that. It is two officers, but we share one with the career tech.
Fourteen hours, a.
Day. So instead of having, so we've got two, we have two officers that we use. One of them is here for six hours, and the other two hours, they're with the career tech. The other one is full-time, and he's here for eight hours. Sometimes you'll see them change out an hour, and you'll see them at a basketball game or an event. So they work with Ms. Martini or Dr. Nice, or Coach Foster, and they might work just their hours, depending if we need them at an event.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions about those general fund purchase orders? What numbers now?
It's up there, it's like ninety-seven thousand. I noticed that earlier, eighty thousand, I just forgot. Ninety-nine thousand is a number eleven. You said City of Alva, maybe you did.
So, City of Alva, number, okay, purchase order number eleven, City of Alva SRO. So I believe it was about approximately a three-dollar cost of living increase that we saw from last year to this year.
For an hour?
Yes, roughly, it's gone up like that about each year with the City of Alva.
Just what it is, what it started out at, about fifty thousand? It's unfortunate. It has shown the sign of the times, just because I'm old enough.
Well, it was thirty-five fifty-five for a hundred and seventy-two days, at eight hours a day, so probably roughly close to that.
They do a great work, you know, we love them, it's been nice to pull off that, but those schools, it's going to be good. I just want to say.
If you look at the bottom attachment, General Fund Payroll, those are the encumbrances for each employee throughout the semester. Okay, agenda item four point two, our building fund. Again, these building fund purchase orders, many of them are open purchase orders. Purchase order number two, with Client Electrical, seventeen thousand five hundred, that's for electrical repairs. Purchase orders number fourteen and fifteen, O G and E, O N G, O G U, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We've increased that about twenty-five thousand from last year. If you remember, we had to come back later and open up a purchase order later in the year to complete the school year for electrical expenses. Purchase order number fifteen, for sixty thousand for O N G, that's about a thirty thousand dollar increase from the previous year. Purchase orders number nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-four, Northwest Flooring and Zeller Flooring are doing some improvements to classrooms at Longfellow and Lincoln. Also replacing the carpet at the library. And purchase order number twenty for two thousand nine hundred and eighty, we are adding HVAC to the music room at Longfellow. If you remember, that was one of the items listed in our strategic plan meeting with the Facilities Committee. And so we're going to be able to get that installed at the Longfellow piece. Any questions about any of the building fund purchase orders?
Is it never air-conditioned?
Well, it wasn't a music room. It wasn't a music room. So it was a storm cellar. Not a storm cellar, storm shelter.
Storm something.
Yeah.
Was it underground?
No. Shelter. Okay, agenda item four point three, if you'll open the top attachment, those are purchase orders from our Child Nutrition Fund. Three hundred and fifty thousand, purchase order number one, Keystone Food Service. If you look at purchase order number three, Heartland Chlorous Systems, that's a dishwasher repair, open purchase order for five thousand dollars. And then purchase order number seven for three thousand dollars, hot shot power washing, it's kitchen hood. If you look at the second attachment to that, that is our payroll for our Child Nutrition Fund.
Are those the only three employees we have left?
That is correct.
Out of how many did we have at the beginning, twenty?
Well, we would have had two at each elementary site, and high school had one, I believe, and middle school had three, roughly, so.
And then the director.
This Keystone, is the three hundred and fifty thousand, does that reflect that increase that they've, so they've incurred that ninety percent?
Yes, and and, I mean, you know, it's going to depend on how many trades we serve with regard to that cost. So we open that purchase order under the belief that we're going to serve the same amount of meals, and that'll be wrapped with the price. But yes, that is what their cost has been curbing, that question, thank you. Okay, agenda item four point four, if you'll open that attachment there, that is our gift fund. And so purchase order number one is fifteen thousand dollars, that is the fee for our work on our Washington entrance improvement. Purchase order number two and purchase order number three, if you remember, Alba State Bank donated fifty thousand for our band, vocal, and art programs. And so purchase order number two is going to purchase some art supplies for eight hundred and fifty-one ninety-two. And then purchase order number three is a portion of gloves for our band members that's next year. Any other questions on our general fund, building fund, child nutrition, or gift fund? If there are none, I would recommend approval of those funds.
Any motion?
We'll do approve items four point one, four point two, four point three, and four point four as presented.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Item number five, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, we'll start with agenda item five point one. We'll see a resignation here from Krista Friday. Krista has accepted a position at Burlington as a school counselor, and so really appreciate Krista. She's been a good employee and a good friend, and so we'll be sure of best of luck. The second resignation we have is actually a voluntary separation from Amber Sandoval, and she has accepted a job elsewhere. Agenda item number five point two, just want to give you an update first on our construction projects, still coming towards August first, as being the completion date for those. Want to restructure our board committees a little bit, and so ask Ms. Kane and Mr. Hanson to continue to serve our Salary and Policy Committee. And for facility, Mr. Hanson and Mr. Pinkleton, you all will serve on that committee as we begin moving forward with construction projects. Want to give you a certification update, kind of certification slash staffing update. Principals are working very diligently. We have three positions still to fill, with some interviewing still to take place. If you go to our website, the website is updated on those. And so we're going to bring to the board in August some emergency certified teachers who are pending some requests, some approvals, have taken tests and so forth. So Emma Klein will be brought to the board on August fifth for elementary music. Linnell Fine will actually be brought to the board as an English teacher. She is a certified first through eighth grade teacher, and we will hijack her for our English. And, help me remind. Oh, and we will bring, we will bring Debbie Quiddit, also August fifth. Debbie is pending her testing results, so we're going to go ahead and immerse, certify her as we wait on those.
Nichols.
And, and then we have a reassignment. Ms. Martini has requested Ms. Nichols be reassigned to the middle school counseling position. And so at this point in time, if you look here at our current job opportunities on our website, we have already a childhood teacher through the resignation of Ms. Friday. We have a middle school social studies position open through the reassignment of Ms. Nichols, and then we have our speech language pathology through our promotion of Ms. Potter as our director. And so principal's doing a really good job, and I believe we will have all of these filled, by all of these filled.
We don't, the coaches, have we already done those, the ones that, like?
Jeremy Jones is getting an extension on his provisional.
Okay.
And we will bring Trey Johnson, he is awaiting test results also, so we're going to go ahead and immerse him. Thank you, yes.
I thought we had a couple more.
Yeah, thank you. Last thing, you'll see handbooks attached there. We have an elementary handbook, middle school handbook, and high school handbook. You've noticed that any changes made to the handbooks have been highlighted. Anything that's been removed, you'll see a strike through. I'll give you a moment to kind of peruse those, this isn't for a vote yet, so if you have questions, you're welcome to bring those questions back in August for approval. I don't think there's been any major changes to any handbooks to really report, so we'll bring those back in August for, for your approval.
See, your name highlighted, Abby.
Okay, agenda item five point three, Strategic Plan. I mentioned to you last month, I would bring an update on Strategic Plan, and want to show you first the Accountability Plan flow chart that we initially created. And so that's going to be the first attachment there. Wanted to try to streamline this a little bit, to make it simpler for our administrators and our teachers and our committees to work on these. And so you will see that, really not a whole lot of changes there at the top, just maybe changing Mrs. Williams' name, I don't want to change our maiden there. But if you go down and look at the timeline structure, I think that's maybe where we changed it a little bit, and want to try to meet a little more often. You can see those dates with school board representatives and our goal area chairs. And so you can see we kind of plan those dates, those are tentative dates, to get together and kind of talk about where we are a little more often on an informal basis, and then bring that to a board meeting to discuss. If you'll scroll on down to the second page, you will see the timeline there for the Accountability Plan and those that serve on-site committees. We created a planning guide for each one of these sites, and so that's a clickable link, and if you click on that, each site will go through on their committee, and it's going to kind of choose what they want to try to tackle. their committee and it's going to kind of choose what they want to try to tackle together. So we really want to make it site-based, empower our principals and teachers to work through some of those action steps that our community holds important to them. You'll also see it goes through and it gives each date and month on who will be presenting. And I just provided a Google form to kind of help each principal gather that information.
Is it possible for you, Terry, to send this to us in a PDF?
They don't have it, but I think we can get to you.
No, we can just take a little time. We guys go back here and look at it. One of the four on some nights when you can't sleep.
Okay, the second attachment is our working report card. And so I want to, want to, and this is, this is going to be one of those, there's a lot of information, and you might want to take some time and look at it in next month and ask some questions about it. So each goal area met with their team in May, I believe, this or March when we did that. And really went through and made some revisions to the action steps. And so if you scroll down through this, you can see those revisions, they're in red. And so just to kind of point out to you one thing you see there with this first initiative under curriculum and instruction, they really clarified those action steps as to what they mean and the terminology. It was kind of some educational jargon that, you know, not all of us really might understand what those words even mean or what we're trying to accomplish. And so you can, you can go down through that document and you can see in red where that curriculum instruction committee not only maybe added some things, but they also made some strike throughs in some areas that they felt like either maybe had been accomplished or didn't meet us where we were at right now. And so there are 24 pages of this working document that shows those changes, okay? If you look at the last attachment, that is the quote-unquote clean document. So if you look at that one, that is the document that the action steps have all been cleaned up and there's no strike throughs or red on those. Okay, does that make sense?
Okay, help me out here. This ties, this right here in the strategic plan ties back into our report card?
No.
No, I'm tying the report card here differently.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with that.
Okay, that's a good question. No, that's good. So I use term, that's good, I use the terminology, report card. Yeah, that's good, that's good. I need to change that. So if you look at that.
Don't get too high.
Report card, the state report card is different. This is just our report card on the progress we make in our, within our strategic plan.
Excellent.
Yeah.
It's still a good report card. I was just trying to tie it together, I was having trouble. Okay, sorry.
No, that's good. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
So do you think our score is good, our corrective score card?
I think we've made a lot of progress. I think one of the things that, probably the biggest discussion point that we had out there on that day amongst, really, I think it was the entire committee, is do you, do you score by cohort? Do you track by cohort? Or do you track year to year? And so what that means is on our strategic plan report card, we had benchmarks that we wanted to see improvement each year, and normally they were in increments of about 2%. And so those aren't the same kids each year. You want to say in second grade, we want them to be proficient in math. So we say we set our benchmark at 50%. Well, the next year, that's not the same group of second graders, it's a different group of second graders. And so you're not really tracking by cohort, you're just tracking by grade. And so what was determined by the group is that, and fair is not the right word, but maybe in the spirit of trying to get data as clean as possible, we should track by cohort, which means you have to go at a diagonal down the report card. Now, what I've found is that, I've got to make some more corrections because they didn't go in real good diagonals when they did it, but the intent of that is to truly track second graders as they go to third grade.
Define the word cohort?
Same group of kids each year.
In the same grade?
Same, well, no.
Same kids going from grade to grade, right?
Yes.
They are an identified group.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was thinking that meant, but I don't want to.
You see the word cohort used a lot on graduation report. You'll see kids, and they changed that a few years back where you could, maybe wouldn't graduate with their cohort, and they had to graduate with another cohort, which was another group of seniors.
Were they identified?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I thought, thought I was understanding that.
Nope.
Okay. Where are we?
Items of current business.
Thank you.
Items 6.1, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one, non-certified position for the 23-24 school year.
Appreciate the diligence of Ms. Williams. She has done some interviewing for custodial position and has offered employment for TJ Kooop. TJ's been known for us and done a really good job, and we feel like he'd do a good job at Washington Elementary, so I would recommend approval of his employment.
Do you have a good back?
Yes. Because the moan of the lungs, too, you're doing a great job, so.
That's a hard act of watching.
Yes.
Always there.
Yes, right.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. Do you have a motion to approve applicant number one?
I make that motion.
Coach?
Second. Pinkleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.2, discussion of possible board action, vote to accept credits from Northbus Technology Center for students attending Career Tech classes and earning credits in mathematics and/or science for the 23-24 school year.
This is a routine agenda item that we bring back each year. We have great partnership with Career Tech. It's really expanded our opportunities for our young people. Our students can take biomed, computer courses, any of the science courses that they're offered and receive credit. So I would recommend approval of this agenda item for the 23-24 school year.
Move to approve item 6.2. A second motion.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following salary schedules and assignments for fiscal year 24.
Okay, we'll start with agenda item 6.3.1, the administrative salary schedule. Appreciate the time that Mr. Hanson and Ms. Kane spent and looked over this. It's a, it's a pretty exciting time for, I think, the district and the state as far as teacher funding and teacher pay raise. And so we'll start first here with our administrative salary schedule. On the administrative salary schedule, we have reduced the factor for each of the administrative salaries by .05. The reason for doing this was to bring it more in line with what the teacher pay raise would be. So this has been communicated with all of the administrators. Our administrative costs are about $593,000 approximately. It's an increase of $37,000 from our previous school year. Agenda item 6.3.2, our teacher salary schedule. As we all know, our teachers have received a much deserved salary schedule raise. One of the great things that, that our district has done for quite a few years now is has increased that salary schedule. We now go up to step 35. And so estimated salary cost for our district is going to be about $6.4 million. The increase is about $533,000. We may have some, you know, as we fill positions, those will change just a little bit. Want to point out to the board that we've been paying above the state minimum salary schedule since 2019. If you'll remember legislatively, they came out and gave a teacher pay raise of $1,200 at that time and asked all districts to add that step, and they did not change the salary schedule. We did. And so we tried to always pay above the state minimum and really pretty proud that we've been able to, to do that. 6.3.3, our support personnel salary schedule. If you look at the support salary schedule here, I am proposing to the Board of Education a $1 increase to all of our support salary positions. You can see that base pay across the top. We did adjust one factor, and that was our transportation factor from 1.9 to 1.8. All employees are receiving a raise anywhere between $400 and about $2,300. It's been a rough year. We talked about inflation, it has been for all of our employees, especially our support. And so it's my hope that with this dollar raise, we're able to make an impact and hopefully review it again in the years to come and continue to kind of make that better for our folks. The support salary raise is going to cost in addition to $349,000. Right now, our support salaries are about $2.2 million. Extra duty salary schedule, if you'll open up that attachment, there are no changes to that, but if you still open it up and look at that, we've made no change to that thus far. We'll continue to meet and review that. We know we still have a few positions still to fill, and so we'll, we'll take a look at that at a later date. We're also reviewing how we can make our extra duty stipends, continue to push the envelope there as far as making those attractive and uniform across the board. Again, appreciate Ms. Martini, Dr. Nice, Wong, Coach Foster, and our two board members for their input in that area. We'll, we'll continue to look at that throughout the year. Extra duty assignments, agenda item 6.3.5. You'll see that none of these are highlighted because we begin our new year, and as we have additional staff or make additional extra duty assignments, we'll highlight those when we bring those back to board. But I do want to point some out, I know I've mentioned these before, we have April Ridgway. She is doing academic team at Lincoln Elementary. Nacy Sutter is going to be middle school and high school vocal. Trey Johnson, our middle school boys basketball, assistant football, middle school track. Savannah King and Mackenzie Adams are assistant softball coaches. Chesley Thomas and Maya Stewart are head cheerleading and assistant high school cheerleading, and then Megan Kirkley is middle school cheerleading, just to name a few. So we've got a few more still to fill. We'll bring those back next month as we, as we fill those. Any questions?
Do you equate like the added increase in what these raises will cost versus how much money we're going to get? Have you seen that side by side?
Um, we don't really know what we're going to get. It's all, it's all an estimate. We believe that, gosh, I hate to divulge this, but I'm going to ballpark it, I'm going to say we're going to get about $500,000 extra than what we got last year. So the state's going to cover the expense of the raise. I've heard some differing, I've got differing information. I've been told that it's only a one-year expense covered. I've been told by others that it's, it's going to renew annually. But we're operating off the belief that it's only one year that it's been approved for the pay rates.
The state is, what, part of what you're saying is fringe and salary?
Correct, that's right. So we always get, Shane, we're always going to get our fringe covered by the state. It's real important that, and Ms. Nettles does a great job, principals do, you get all that information in as soon as possible. You really don't want to hire after, I believe, it's March, because you're not going to get that fringe back.
So it looks like it's approximately $900,000 of increases.
Right.
Versus we think we get $500,000. So that comes out of the reserve.
Correct, and that's what, you know, so we get about 1.4 in state aid, we get about, roughly close to the same in our fringe benefits that we get. So that's 2.4, and our payroll is going to be roughly about 9.2 the extra, so.
Yep. And I think it's hard to sometimes understand what your payroll actually is, what you're actually given, and where the, the rest of that's coming from, is what we've accumulated from year to year to year, and it's.
Your local collections are very important.
Very sure, yeah.
Your at the forum, and then your chargeables are really important to your budget.
So, because there are some schools that wouldn't be able to do more than, uh, correct?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I mean, a lot of schools. Okay. Item 6.4, we need a motion to approve those, sorry.
Make a motion that we approve 6.4.
No, no, we're agenda item 6.3.
6.3, I jumped ahead of the code, so that's not bad.
Agenda item 6.3.
6.3, all of them.
I look at 6.3.
Yeah, all of those in 6.3. Motion for 6.3, or here's a second.
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, now 6.4, sorry. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a three-year statutory waiver allowing the Alva School District to serve as fewer than 10 alternative education students at Hava High School and Alvin's Middle School without participating in a cooperative agreement with other districts beginning the 23-24 school district.
So we did this last year, and we only did a one-year deregulation. And so we've been advised to go ahead and do the three-year. And so what this means is we're going to still serve our alternative education kids just like we've always done, but it covers us in the event that we don't serve more than 10 and we're not co-op, because they are encouraging you to co-op if you're under 10. But we're not going to do that. It doesn't hurt, we, we anticipate we will serve more than 10. But when you start a school year out, you're not really going to know who's going to qualify for that alt ed or who, who, what kid that best fits. Okay? Any questions regarding that agenda item? If not, I would recommend it's approved.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following contract for fiscal year 24. 6.5.1, City of Alva SRO. We're going to do them all together. 6.5.2, Jan Eden PT. 6.5.3, Share Medical Center for Physical Therapy. 6.5.4, Stepping Stones LLC.
Okay, we'll start first with 6.5.1, our City of Alva contract for SRO. I mentioned earlier, it's 14 hours a day, so that's two SROs, one of them's eight, one of them's six, the other two hours they spend at the Career Tech. The hourly wage was $3,804 last year, it's $41,85 this year. We contract them out for 172 days, which is the days that work. 6.5.2, Jan Eden. Jan Eden is a physical therapist, she's worked for us for many years, she serves our home school, our homebound students for physical therapy services. 6.5.3, Share Medical Center, Physical Therapy. We had great results last year with the two young ladies at Share Medical Center. Very good reports from not only our parents, but our teachers, our kids made some major progress in physical therapy. And so very pleased to be able to renew the contract with them again. 6.5.4, Stepping Stones. Again, we use Stepping Stones as our school psychologists. They meet our requirements for our IEPs that we have with students. $800 in evaluation has not increased. $800 in evaluation has not increased, and so it's been a good service for our IEP kids. Any questions regarding any of these contracts? If not, I would recommend approval of agenda item 6.5.1 through 6.5.4.
Move to approve the contracts on item 6.5? Second.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
6.6 Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the renewal lease agreement for a 571, 571 passenger buses for fiscal year 24 as required in the provisions of the lease agreement dated June 7, 2021 between the Alvis School District and Midwest Bus Sales.
So this is the final year of our three-year renewable lease with Midwest Bus Sales. They come and service all of our buses. We're able to lease those and use them each year. It's been a good service for us. We'll have to get started on that soon. As we know, buses are not still always readily available. If you remember, we were with Ross prior to this. During the pandemic, our lease came up and we had to switch to Midwest. And it's been a good lease and good for our kids. And so I would recommend approval of agenda item 6.6.
I make a motion that we approve item 6.6.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Item 6.7 Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve an out-of-state travel request from FFA advisor Chad Locker to travel with the livestock judging team to the following judging contest. Is that LaBette, I believe? LaBette County, Kansas on July 27th, 28th of '23, Crawford County, Kansas on August 3rd and 4th of '23, and Pratt, Kansas on August 11th, 2023.
A great opportunity for our livestock judging team. I know they've got some really great young people that are part of that program and I would recommend approval of this opportunity for them to travel outstate.
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve 6.7.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
6.8 Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the First Baptist Church to use a school bus during July 24th, 3/29/2003 to transport east to and from Falls Creek in Davis, Oklahoma.
So First Baptist Church is used, our active bus last couple of years for this church camp. They provide a licensed certified driver. They pay for fuel and they provide us with a certificate of insurance. I would recommend approval of this transportation request.
Make a motion we accept 6.8?
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Item 6.9 Superintendent's Presentation of Draft Policy Regarding Complaint Aids to a Student Related to an Administrator, Supervisor, or Board Member. And Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the draft policy for policy committee considerations.
If you want to open up the attachment there, there's a policy provided by our school attorney, RFR Low Rainey. I would recommend that we review this policy and the policy committee look at this draft for future consideration.
So will this be brought back in August?
Yes, whenever the policy committee goes like it needs to be.
And does this, this address all of our, all of its recommendations?
No.
This one policy?
No.
Does not?
I believe you asked me to research speakers by August and.
Social media.
Social media by August.
All right, so we do not. We'll approve this draft policy to be taken to the policy committee to be back and back to final approval. So I guess we'll need a motion to do that list.
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you do business?
No, ma'am.
Item number eight, propose executive session to discuss AEA negotiations for 25 Oklahoma State statutes, section 307b2. Vote to convene to executive session.
Second.
Motion, ma'am, second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.